Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, will you please take the roll call? Mayor Beaton, here. Councilmember Lundberg, here. Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan, here. Councilmember Shemansky, here. Councilmember Grabowski, here. Councilmember Martin Poniac, here. City manager, here. City attorney, here. DPW director, here. Police chief, here. Fire chief, here. City engineer, here. Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Good evening. Mark Whitliff, 363 Tenth Street. I just want to ask for support for the three standing planning commissioners for tonight's appointment. Marlene McBride, Bob Slavinsky, and myself. Thank you. Bob Slavinsky, 256 Hughes Street. Just want to ask the council's support of incumbents of Mark Whitliff, myself, and Marlene and McBride for the planning commission.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move along. The consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and are considered by the city manager to be routinely read. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll invoices, and the notification regarding the next study session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Roll call.
Mayor Beaton, yes. Councilmember Lundberg, yes. Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan, yes. Councilmember Shemansky, yes. Councilmember Grabowski, yes. Councilmember Martin Poniac. Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Appreciation to Dennis and Kathy Schneider for their generous donation to the City of Manistee and Manistee Fire Department. Mr. Gamble, would you like to explain this further?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we've received a generous donation from Kathy and Dennis Schneider. They had a very nice encounter with the fire department and were very appreciative. And at this time, I'd like to invite Kathy up. I think she wanted to talk a little bit about it, and then we'll present the check to the city. Thank you.
Yes, in July of this year, my husband and I came here for vacation. And we will remember this trip as our first trip because of an accident that we had, a boating accident. And the fire and rescue department came to our boat and took me to the hospital. And as you can see, I'm fine today. But we will remember the trip. But what is memorable to us is the care and the concern that the fire department treated us as if we were family members and not just visitors from the outside. So we'd like to thank them and the community because you have a wonderful community here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the fire department, members of council, mayor, and Kathy and Dennis Schneider. We have a check over here at this side, and we'll take a picture.
We have a great fire department. I'm surprised. All right. Next item on the agenda would be introduction of Tracy Davis, Housing Ready Program Coordinator for Manistee County.
Hi, I'm Tracy Davis, Swodorski Davis. So you may remember me by Swodorski. I grew up in this area. So I'm thrilled to be back here and working and living in this community that means so much to myself and my family is here, my relatives, parents. And I am going to be working closely with Bill, the city manager, for housing resources and opportunities for a broad range from all levels and all ages throughout the county. So I'm just thrilled to be here. And I have my own housing story when I moved back. Because I grew up here, I thought, piece of cake for me to find housing, but it didn't turn out that way. So I ended up living with my parents for six months and then was able to find a place that wasn't for sale through relatives. So I was lucky, but a lot of people aren't that lucky when they're trying to come here for a job or even just stay in this area. So I hope to be a part of the solution and take on some of the projects that Rising Tide had set forth and reevaluate where we are right now with a housing action team in this community. So I'm thrilled to be here. If there's any questions, I know I've met some of you, but I'm eager to get started. I've been here one month. Bill probably let you know when I was hired. And I'm excited and eager to start moving forward. So thank you.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Consideration of authorizing proposal from Fishback for PFAS remedial investigation of the former landfill site. Phase one shallow boring work. The city was notified on March 2nd by the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy that the city is liable for PFAS exceedances found at the former landfill site on Adomski Road. Since receiving the notice from Eagle, the city has been working with Fishback to create a work plan to determine the extent of the contamination. The work plan was approved by Eagle on September 13th, 2022. Approval is contingent on a timely implementation of the work plan. The first step of the work plan is the shallow boring investigative work. At this time, council could take action to authorize the proposal from Fishback for PFAS remedial investigation of the former landfill site. Phase one shallow boring work in the amount of $55,776. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second?
I think we'd like to hear some more detail on this plan and what this contract is all about.
Thank you, Mayor. So we knew we received a letter from Eagle back in March stating we were responsible for PFAS at the former landfill site. So part of this is this investigation of the extent of the contamination. We worked, Fishback is our brownfield consultant and also environmental consultant. We worked with them to develop a work plan to find out exactly the extent of the contamination. And as you mentioned, the first step's the shallow boring work. I think the overall process, we budgeted $125,000 going into this year. And this first step is $55,000, but we're hoping the information we get will help. Kind of maybe we can alter the work plan, but we'll see. But this is kind of the first step. The second step's going to be vertical aquifer profiles, which are more expensive than permanent monitoring wells. And each step requires drilling, which is a large part of this, and also PFAS testing. There's, I think you said, there's 31 different or 29 different PFAS that they check for. But anyway, this is the first step, and I'd like to invite Peter up to talk a little bit about the process. Unfortunately, our projector is out, the bulb went. But just for members of council, we have two different maps in front of you. And then for members of the public, we have some available. Anyone like to take a look? First one, Peter, I think you, Eagle performed work over at the site originally.
Yeah, so hi, my name's Peter Leptick. I'm a senior hydrogeologist with Fishback. Bill contacted a colleague of mine to provide some assistance to the city on this matter. So as you know, the city received an engagement letter from Eagle in the spring. It pertains to some work that they performed on behalf of the state of Michigan in October of 2020. They came out to the site and performed a couple vertical aquifer profiles. That involves advancing drilling tooling into the subsurface and collecting groundwater samples at various intervals. They identified impacts of several different PFAS substances at different depth intervals. Three of those particular compounds were identified above the state's Part 201 drinking water criteria. So as a second step, in 2021, Eagle returned to the former landfill area and installed three monitoring wells. Samples collected from those monitoring wells corroborated the earlier work and identified these three constituents that are above the health-based drinking water criteria. Upon kind of review of that data is when they reached out to the city with an engagement letter requiring that the city evaluate the nature and extent of impact to the groundwater. And as part of that, it's a Part 201 requirement, they're looking at, you know, getting our arms around the horizontal extent of the impact as well as the vertical, how deep that impact has gone into the subsurface. So we've worked with Bill and been in contact with the folks at Eagle and had a couple different meetings to make sure we're all on the same sheet of music in regards to what they're hoping to see. We've staged this investigation in kind of a couple different steps. The first step is going to be this shallow investigation that Bill discussed. That's going to involve getting out to the site with a direct push drill rig and setting some temporary PVC monitoring wells around 45, 50 feet below ground surface such that they'll intersect the water table. And then we'll collect groundwater samples from those locations and submit them under chain of custody to a certified laboratory for the analysis of 31 PFAS compounds that the state of Michigan is requiring be analyzed for. Once that information is obtained, or the results have been received, we'll tabulate the data and summarize it and produce a little memo that we'll distribute to Eagle with the findings and our recommendations for the next phase of work. So that's the proposal that we've put forth at this time.
Do we know which way that that flume is going at all so far?
Yep. As part of the work that Eagle did, they installed the three monitoring wells that I referenced and surveyed the top of casing elevation of those wells and then collected depth-to-water measurements from the top of casing to where the water level stabilizes and identified the apparent groundwater flow direction. And it's migrating towards the northwest is what it looks like.
On how many wells will you be doing during this shallow phase?
Sure. We're looking at about 10 locations at this point. And we've tried to take a practical approach towards this investigation. Eagle, their initial request was that we get out there and perform vertical aquifer profiling at every location. So that involves collecting samples every 10 to 15 feet throughout the thickness of the aquifer, and it's a very costly endeavor. We kind of pushed back a little bit and offered a more pragmatic approach where we said, hey, the highest concentrations are up at the water table surface. Let's first get our arms around the shallow impact, and then we can get back and strategically position some of these vertical aquifer profile borings that'll go a little bit deeper. But in short, at this time, we're looking at 10 shallow borings, I think is what our current proposal states. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Bill, do we have any idea what a well cost?
So I think, yeah, I don't have that cost in front of me. What are you talking about, for the vertical, for the shallow boring or for the?
For the shallow.
Yes, we obtained three different drilling quotes for that work. I think the winning bid, I have it here.
$15,000.
Yeah, that sounds right, Bill. Bear with me for a second. Yep, it's $15,902.80 for the drilling subcontractor. And then, as Bill mentioned, the actual laboratory analytical costs are quite expensive. It's a very involved process. We also obtained competitive bids for that work, and I think the pricing that we received was about $300, $302 a sample. So that's another reason why we're trying to, you know, limit some of the upfront investigation, just because each sample costs $300.
So based on whatever you get out of this, what, like, do you already have a plan for phase two or whatever that happens to be? Do you have, like, what would be the next thing you do?
Right, yeah. As Bill mentioned, we have a work plan that was submitted to Eagle and approved. The steps of the work plan involve this initial shallow investigation. And then step two would be performing vertical aquifer profiling. And we would likely have to do this at about four locations. We're not quite sure where those would be positioned at this time because it's contingent upon the results of phase one. And then after we do the vertical aquifer profile work and get a handle on how deep the impacts are, the state of Michigan is requiring that permanent monitoring wells be installed, both a shallow and a deep well at each location to create an infrastructure such that we can demarcate the extent of contamination.
You're going to just kind of contain it?
Yeah, kind of, I mean, understand the nature and extent. So that's where the, I guess, the project goal is at this point. As a side, the Michigan Department of Public Human Health and Services has also been out into the community nearby and collected some residential water well samples. So they're doing some of their own work as well.
Are they sharing those results with you?
It's confidential, but they've shared preliminary data with me and indicated that of the, is it right that I share them? Of the 16 residents that were sampled, 15 of them were non-detect and one had one detection, but it was less than criteria.
Oh, okay.
They haven't, they won't. They will, yeah, it's great news. They won't provide the details of where the samples were obtained.
Is there any viable way of basically fixing the PFAS problem?
Yeah.
In any direction?
So it's what's considered an emergent contaminant of concern. I don't know if people are familiar with PFAS. It's been in the news a lot lately. So it's sometimes referred to as the forever chemical. You know, it's been used in a lot of waterproofing processes, like anything that says Gore-Tex on it has PFAS in it, you know, Teflon, cookware, firefighting foam, use at airports, and a number of other applications, any waterproofing kind of application. Things people are doing are absorbing it to activate a carbon, kind of like a Brita filter, but on a larger scale. There's also some ion exchange resins people use. There's ways people are fractionating the foam that develops from it. And some other processes, there's some promising biological tools that are being looked into and most recently, just a month or two, I think there was a paper in Nature kind of presenting some research that came out of Northwestern where they figured out a way to break the fluorine-carbon bond. So there's, as I said, it's a new contaminant of concern, and there's a lot of research right now into figuring out how to cost-effectively break it down.
Quick question for Mr. Gamble. Is that, is the gateway to the dump locked now or has it been open? Is it fully locked now so that only the DPW can go into it?
I believe it was locked, yes.
So when we first discovered this problem, was it locked at that time or, okay?
So, yeah, I believe the dump closed in about the 70s. So I think it's just, I think at the time, I think a lot of things were put in there and there wasn't a lot of monitoring going on. It was just the dump, and this is kind of the consequence that came many years later, discovery of PFAS.
They dumped everything back there, because I used to, way back there.
That's what I've heard.
Yeah. A lot of people were there at, like, June wraps. So there was a lot of action.
I think, Peter, the most practical application typically, so this is going to, we're going to set up these monitorings, but monitoring wells eventually. But really, if it gets to a residential well, the next step is probably those carbon filters. It's probably the practical application at this point to help protect people from it. But as I said, the work plan is justifying the nature and extent of the impact. And, yeah, this is the first step. We have an estimate with what they approved, the steps, this is the first one with the drilling costs and everything. It's looking like $350,000 total impact for this. So we'll be looking for funding for this as well. But the approval of the work plan was contingent on us, on timely implementation. And appreciate, we, you know, we received the three bids, so these drilling bids are good for 30 days. So we did get a good price with the one contractor. So that's kind of the approach we'd like to take with it, kind of one step at a time. And we were looking, as a side, too, we're trying to use, Jeff had an idea to use existing monitoring wells that the Morton Salt had, but Eagle had concerns about there being contamination in those, so that wasn't allowed. But this is kind of what was approved.
Yeah, we tried a couple different cost savings measures by using some of the existing infrastructure that's out in the area already from that previous investigation that Bill mentioned. And the state of Michigan responded that, you know, the results would be untrustworthy because we didn't know the well construction and couldn't verify how they were built and what kind of sampling devices have been put down them in the past. And they just indicated that it would create more questions than answers. Similarly, we tried to use the residential well sampling data that the Department of Human Health and Services has to help kind of guide the investigation. And they kind of indicated that we couldn't use that dataset either. That again, because the wells are positioned throughout the aquifer, not necessarily in a, you know, a depth interval that could be representative of the greatest migration pathway and well construction techniques and yada yada. It just created a lot of questions and uncertainty.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Councilmembers, are you ready to vote? Roll call. Councilmember Martin Poniac, yes. Councilmember Grabowski, yes. Councilmember Shemansky, yes. Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan, yes. Councilmember Lundberg, yes. Mayor Beaton, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a three-year agreement with Huron Tackle Company. The city owns and maintains a fish cleaning station at Douglas Park, First Street Beach. The city has contracted with Huron Tackle in the past to manage and remove the fish waste from the facility. Their proposed agreement amends cleaning responsibilities and allows for storage of refrigerated trailers at the city cold storage area with a reduction in cost. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve a three-year contract with Huron Tackle Company for an annual amount of $5,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Discussion?
I think they've done a good job in the past.
I do, too. I don't think $5,000 a year is unreasonable either.
So where's the refrigeration thing going to be? Doesn't it say that they're adding a refrigeration storage somewhere?
Yes, it's going to be located over by the cold storage by Dr. Shrink, kind of that area. So it's a little bit out of the way. They collect fish from different, it's, Manistee's kind of a middle point, so that was kind of, it kind of made it work for them to have that located there. And it was out of the way enough, ended up being refrigerated, you know, we don't want the smell. And we do have some outs in the contract if they violate that.
Thank you. Shall we vote? You ready? Councilmember Shemansky, yes. Councilmember Grabowski, yes. Councilmember Martin Poniac, yes. Mayor Beaton, yes. Councilmember Lundberg, yes. Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan, yes. Motion approved.
Consideration of a parcel split at 99 Arthur Street. The Society for Preservation of the SS Milwaukee would like to split their parcel at 99 Arthur Street, 5151 101 275 dash O2. The parcels meet the zoning requirements, and the city assessor has confirmed that the split is legal and allowable. The City of Manistee Planning Commission gave their recommendation to city council for the parcel split request to continue at their October 6, 2022 meeting. At this time, council could take action to approve the parcel split at 480 River Street.
But that would be 99?
99 Arthur Street.
Yeah, it's a typo in there.
Yeah, okay. You're right. I'm just reading along. 99 River Street. Do I have a motion?
99 Arthur Street.
Arthur Street.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Right. Any questions? What are they using the split for? I don't understand what they're, why they want to split.
Katie is here to, but understand they're selling off part of the property to a separate entity.
Is that one the north part of the bill or?
I believe the SS Milwaukee, because that one's contiguous, I believe, with the former Little Caesars property, so.
Shall we vote on this parcel split at 99 Arthur Street? Are we ready? Okay. Okay. Ready.
Mayor Beaton, yes. Councilmember Lundberg, yes. Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan, yes. Councilmember Shemansky, yes. Councilmember Grabowski, yes. Councilmember Martin Poniac, yes. Motion approved.
Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Compensation Commission, Harbor Commission, Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, Pay Commission, Planning Commission, and Tree Commission. Mayoral and manager appointments require a motion and a second, and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives a majority vote. The following applications have been received. Harbor Commission, three vacancies. One, one year. Harbor Commission, three vacancies, one, one-year term ending 10/31/23, and two terms ending 10/31/25. Two members can be non-residents but must own real estate or a business or profession having a licensed business location in the city. Council appointment.
I'd like to nominate Tyler Cook of 373 Second Street to the one-term ending 10/31/25.
I'll second.
Don't need a second. Don't need a second. Okay.
Any discussion? Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, one vacancy, term ending 4/30/24. Applicants must be city residents or city property owners, and at least one applicant should be a representative from a local service club organization. Council appointment. We have received actually two applications. Kathleen A. Grabowski at 1235 Cornell Street and Janice Ball on Quincy. I think it was sent to the council members. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So again, this is a council appointment.
I'll nominate Kathleen Grabowski, 1235 Cornell Street.
Okay. I guess we'll just take roll call.
Other nominations? Okay.
Yep.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Planning Commission, three vacancies, term ending 10/31/25. Applicants must be city residents. Mayoral appointment. I would like to recommend Maureen McBride for one of the, one of the terms. I will need a motion in a sec.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, I would like to recommend Robert Slabinski, 256 Hughes Street, for the term ending 10/31/25.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. For the third term, I'd like to recommend Mark Wilof at 363 Tenth Street.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, communications, announcements. A report from the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. A regular part of the council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Mr. Xavier Burna, report on the activities of R R C A and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
I made them copies of all of them. Oh, they should be able to.
Let me see. Thank you. We're just trying to sort out if we can still show you the PowerPoint on your screens because I had a video I wanted to play for you.
Should be able to.
Projector's down.
I didn't think about that.
Which is a bummer. All you get to do is hear what's happening in the video. So you just have to imagine what's on stage. I could, that's right. I do work for a theater, right? Just improv.
Can you, I don't know if they can, do you have your screens on up there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Showing up though.
Nothing showing up? No.
All right.
Let me, um.
Maybe I can just start and then if you can.
Let me, let me.
That'd be great. If not, all good. Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me tonight. Jeff told me I have five minutes, so I'm gonna get going here. We all know each other and I've seen most of you at events this year. And, you know, very excited to see that engagement from the council. So each of you have gotten to see a little bit of what we do. Today, I hope to give you a larger picture of what's transpired over the last year. The, I'm still on the first slide here, so, or the second slide, technically first page of the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts is a visual performing arts organization that preserved the historic Ramsdale Theater. As you know, we do a lot of shows, concerts, productions onstage. We have Stellar Art Gallery in Hardy Hall that has been remodeled in the last four years. And we also are actively working on continuing the ongoing preservation and improvement of the Ramsdale Theater. So we, we live by that statement. Of course, we have our vision and mission, which I hope in the next few slides will really be captured. You know, but, you know, to summarize, we really do want to see that city asset become a vibrant regional center for cultural arts education and community engagement. I feel that it is that today. And as we grow, I think it will evolve into bigger, better things, continue to serve the community. Oh, that text is tiny. So overall, I'm on the second page discussing building usage. Overall, we have about 100 events a year that are public events. And the four categories that those are lumped in are R R C A productions and bookings, visual arts exhibits, historic tours, and any of the performances that promote community talent, civic players, conservatory dance, to name a few. Nutcracker is a big one that happens every other year. And so, you know, I've seen a lot of you attend the concerts, tribute concerts, Irish night the other night. So a nice variety of events, live events like that. The visual arts exhibits are really exciting and have grown immensely ever since that restoration, that renovation of the gallery. And I always like to, you know, honor our dear friend Leslie Lasky, who really helped inspire that because he was one of those, you know, prolific artists that told us, no, I will not show at your gallery because your red walls will clash with my art. And we really needed to improve on that. And so we're really grateful for his partnership and friendship and for leading us to a better future. So one of the events I wanted to highlight this year, in its second year, is the Theater Camp, which really gained momentum. We had quite an amazing showcase that is actually available online at ramsdelltheater.org/theatercamp. I had a clip for you, which is on the next slide, that just shows you the final number of the showcase that the kids actually put together themselves. So these kids were highly motivated, highly charged by the instruction that they were, they were receiving, the quality of instruction, you know, people who have had careers in theater, who came to Manistee to teach these kids and to expose them to quality theater making. And of course, we surveyed the kids, tried to learn a little bit more about what they learned, what they took away from it. And, you know, the general gist of it is, you know, see what we can do better the following year. But one of our final questions was, you know, what were five things you know now that you didn't know before? And so here are some of the responses. I did not know that singing was a lot easier than I thought. So that boost of confidence, how much I would still fall in love with it, with theater. And I can kind of speak to that to a degree because as a musician, I knew in middle school, high school, I didn't, I didn't really have ties to other activities, other extracurricular activities, sports and things like that. I dabbled, but music was what I gravitated to. And I was grateful that I had that opportunity in my public school system. You know, and some of these kids around here don't have that in their school. And so, you know, to see that that was once a thing they liked and they got to do it again. And they, of course, let's not ignore the pandemic also, you know, impaired their opportunities. But just that falling back in love with it is pretty profound. Having appreciation for all aspects of theater making was an important part of the curriculum. We had kids involved in tech and in acting. And so they actually got to work with the sound system, with the lighting system. They got to learn about the trap doors on the stage. They got to go up to the fly rail and see how all that works, how you bring the curtains in and down. I mean, and then just to see that that is also behind the scenes what makes the show as much as the acting and the singing was really great. And I thought one of the most profound things was what you think you can do and what you actually can do are often different. And I just think that speaks to that level of confidence we were able to inspire in these young kids. The next page shows you some of the stats of the Theater Camp. We had recruited around 30 kids. And this is pretty typical, once the camp gets started and they really see what they're in for, you know, some of them get the stage fright and then they just, they want to stay home. And so, but we had 23 campers that stayed through the whole two weeks. And we gave out nearly $7,000 in scholarships through the James F. Gaylor Memorial Scholarship Fund. That was a new program that we launched last year that was supporting this kind of program. And most of these kids got 75% scholarships. And the camp tuition was $400. So, you know, all they had to pay was 100 bucks for two weeks of instruction and the showcase and tons of fun. That's a, you know, a little company shot there, too. The schools represented in county and out of county. You know, we're, we're a regional organization. So we didn't just limit this to maps. You know, this was, you know, pretty much open to anybody who's gonna be around here this summer. And I think that that's, you know, an important part of how we program because we're a tourist community. So we should welcome those tourists to our programs, not just our, our beaches. Sorry, Jeff. I think I might have gotten it wrong already. Finances. So I'm on the fourth page here. Just to give you a glimpse, from fiscal year 18, that was about the first year that I was here, up until now, it's an upward trend. Fiscal year 22 had a significant jump because of the shuttered Venue Operators Grant. That was the federal funded grant through the SBA that many of the performing arts venues during the pandemic were receiving. Probably one of the main reasons why we were able to, you know, stay top of mind and still program. But that's the spike that you're seeing. But even if, you know, you compare it to just fiscal year 23, we've just been on that upward trend in terms of revenue because of, you know, diversified, diversified programs and, you know, higher impact programs, the Theater Camp and things like that. So, you know, we're very proud of the work. And I think it's showing in the numbers. And, you know, there's always investments into the building that we're making. Again, that ongoing improvement goes toward the quality of the programs that are presented and how we're able to better serve the community. Renters, you know, MCP and COD don't have these things on hand. So we need to be able to provide them with those resources so that they can put the best show together. So a lot of the stuff we've been doing is in a lot of the theater technology. And the city has obviously made significant contributions so that we could operate year round, you know, and that's been, that's had a profound impact in our ability to program year round. So the next slide.
Can I add?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When you look at a calendar, do you have any open spots? I mean, how many gaps do you have that you could possibly fill the theater with something?
Well, it's, it's 100 events a year, which, you know, you could just say, oh, yeah, you guys program about a third of a year. But there's a lot of planning involved with those 100 programs. So, you know, I would say a lot of those gaps get filled with wedding rentals. We try to look for those opportunities to book those wedding rentals and, you know, help the bottom line. So we try to, we try to make sure that, you know, we don't exceed a certain number of concerts a year, visual arts exhibitions, because it's just, you know, there's just not enough turnaround time.
Okay. So are you at the top of that?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
This would be a constant then, this 100 events, basically?
Well, and that could grow. But obviously, the staff capacity would have to grow. The revenue would have to support that increase. I mean, there are, there are performing arts venues in towns our size that do more than this. They're up to 200 events a year. But it just comes to capacity. So at this point, it's, it's definitely an ambitious goal that we've reached. And I think it just, it really touches on everybody's interests. So does that answer your question?
Well, kind of.
Kind of, yeah. I know I'm not giving you like.
A little poor girl.
A number, but, but yeah, but a lot of the, a lot of the space in between events, like I said, we're trying to plan, you know, make sure we have enough time to plan and execute those well. So the next slide just kind of gives you kind of a breakdown of that growth and support. And so, like I'd mentioned, in fiscal year 22, that grants, that yellow bar at the top is huge because of that SB O D G grant that was, you know, over $100,000 in, in federal funds. So, but overall, you know, our, our local supporters, our state arts council, you know, have been there. That's a, that's a snapshot of the supporters we have today. And, you know, that shows a tremendous amount of, of buy-in, you know, for what we're doing and what kind of level of activity you're seeing in the building. So we're very proud of that. Next slide just gives you some options for how you support the theater. You know, you can go online, you can mail a check. There's also ways through your QCDs, your qualified charitable distribution, if you're 70 and a half or older, gifts of stock, or, you know, leaving a gift through your estate. Those measures really help sustain the organization. The, on the preservation side, the master plan, you know, has been an area of focus for this year after we signed the agreement with the architects, Wheeler, Wheeler Kearns Architects. We've had quite a number of public meetings. Recently, we held some in August. Some of you were in attendance where we got to show you the current master plan update, which is at the 75% deliverable. So we're just waiting for the 95% deliverable. They're gonna have some pretty renderings to go along with that. And we still need to do an RFP to get those cost estimates and have a better idea of, you know, what the campaign's gonna look like. The next couple of slides, just kind of, for some of you, it's a review, but it just shows you some of the plans, the floor plans. Anything in pink is, is a new wall. Anything in gray is an existing wall. And so the basement, not a whole lot of change. Floor Plan 2 is, is where Hardy Hall is. That's, you're gonna see a lot of the change there in the gallery and, you know, having a better sys, having more bathrooms and a better system for the bar support. I am speeding through this because the text is so small. But I. But I am happy to walk you through more in detail on another day, show you these plans. And the ballroom, the exciting thing there is bathrooms in the ballroom, having a larger catering kitchen to work with, having a service elevator for caterers that reaches the ballroom from the back of the building. You know, will really help improve the function there. So future plans for 2023 and beyond, you know, implementing a board strategic plan. The board did have a board strategic plan done earlier this year. And so we're sort of in the process of rolling that out. Capitol Campaign launch, we hope to do at the gala in May of 2023. We'll host the third Ramsdale Theater Camp. The calendar, what I mean by post-pandemic is, you know, 2023 is going to be a fresh start for us. You know, up until this past month, we were still dealing with events that we've had to rebook since 2020. So we haven't really gotten out of the pandemic until just recently. It's been, it's been a little chaotic, but we got through it. And so we're looking forward to that, to next year. Next year, the Ramsdale turns 120 years old. So that's a pretty exciting milestone to celebrate. And we think our vision is to pair that with the launch of the Capitol Campaign and hopefully end at the 125th in 2028. Next slide, some more details about the highlights for 2023. Our fundraisers scheduled for May 13 in 2023, with the hope of launching the Capitol Campaign then. We have seven art exhibits already planned. Tribute concerts, Billy Joel tribute, Genesis? I don't know. Still, it's going to be a surprise. But we know that those are very popular with, with this town, so we're definitely going to bring that back. The third Theater Camp will also be for 30 kids. Civic players have a full season planned at the Ramsdale next year. Next year is also a Nutcracker season, so we'll see that slay bell of next year. And Manistee Catholic Central hasn't had a production in a while, but they're going to host one at the Ramsdale. They're going to do James and the Giant Peach. I thought that was pretty cool. So allow me to just pass out these flyers for that last slide. Just give you some dates to look forward to, events. All right. At this point, I will take any questions and thank you for your time.
Xavier, do you have any opportunities for volunteers? And if so, is there any training that's going to be scheduled any time?
Yes. Thank you for mentioning that. We're, I'm working with Al Frye right now to set up a meeting with some volunteers. Want to set up a better system for recruiting and setting up training modules for volunteers, so that could be on an ongoing basis. We've had a lot of talk about having somebody else hired to manage the volunteer program. We think that that's a deficit in the, in the structure right now. So having somebody more focused on that so that it could be an ongoing thing. So anybody interested in volunteering could just shoot me an email. We have a variety of positions. You can usher at event, at an event. We just bought scanners, so you can now scan tickets. We, you know, you could work the bar if you're, if you like that. You could do the box office if you're, if you like working with computers and dealing with money. So we have a variety of event, of volunteer jobs. So thanks for mentioning that, Mick. I know you like to help out quite a bit, so I appreciate your help on that front, too. You're a good advocate for that, so.
Well, there's plenty. I know that you're always looking for docents as well.
Yeah, yeah. Art gallery, yep, yep. If you like visual arts, it's a good time to hang out, talk to people, read.
Read a book, did you?
Yeah. Sometimes, you know, it's Tuesday, 12 to 3, you know, sometimes people don't show up on Tuesday. They wait till Saturday, so.
Well, thank you for the review. I'm glad you're mugging along despite some of the setbacks from the pandemic.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we got through it, so. Thanks, everyone. Oh, yes.
I was just going to say, I did go to your presentation of the, you know, your upgrading and whatnot, and I thought it was really comprehensive. I really appreciated seeing and excited about what the future could be.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Me, too. Thanks.
Great job. And again, I think you and your staff are, are great ambassadors for the city of Manistee. Really done a marvelous job.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Mark Whitliff, 36310th. I just want to thank the council for their support with Planning Commission tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We'll move on to officials and staff. Mr. Gamble, what's new?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a comment earlier. The camp area, I believe just north of Little Caesar's is what's being sold with the, next to the USS Milwaukee. So I believe that's, I'll confirm it with Katie and send something out. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Saylor?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
City engineer?
Nothing other than I just, I'm just happy to report that we are not having a CSO. And we've got a lot of rain and this, if this would have been last year, we certainly would have been having one.
Well, that is good news.
Other than that, I have nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. McWolfe?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
I'm sure we would like to know how busy your department was today with all of the wind and the rain. If you could give us a quick update on that.
Actually, the police, the fire, and the DPW have been extremely busy. Calls started coming in late yesterday evening and with power lines down and trees down. So they've been sitting on stuff since, what, 8:00 this morning? So we're waiting on consumer's crews for some of them. My guys I sent home about 6:30 to get rested and fed and, because they were in last night. They obviously worked all day today. And then we still have a couple of trees down that we just have to wait for the power to be removed from, so it's safe for us to take care of. But one thing I, I will mention is, and we'll, we'll get something out on Facebook, but we're, we're going to send the crew out, the brush crew, probably Thursday. And we'll just go street by street and go throughout the town because everybody's got limbs down. So that'll, there won't be a need to call. We'll just go street by street and help everybody get cleaned up.
There was a bit of chatter on Facebook today about the flag over at the Lions Pavilion. And Bill assured me that we're going to buy a new flag.
Yeah, we absolutely will. The Parks guys went to take that down this week. And when they started trying to get it down, it was just too unsafe. So, yeah, so they're going to, as soon as it's safe, we'll take it down and it'll be replaced for next year.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks for all your hard work.
Yep.
Thank the guys, too. I know they did a lot today. Fire chief?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Police chief?
I don't have anything, Your Honor. Thank you.
Aaron Pontiac, Martin.
I was going to ask about how the sewer was doing, so that's good news.
Mr. Gabowski?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody in the city because I used to work those same deals. And I know what it is to sit on those trees and lights go down and all that, so I appreciate that. I want to thank Josh for putting that sign up on 12th Street where it slowed down the traffic. Seems like it helped a little bit. So I appreciate that. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Schmansky?
Any update on the Veterans Memorial Park?
The grant application? So we should hear back in December about our final score. But, yeah, we did some, some additional letters to the board, including a review by, from a group representing disabled. So we did get that. So we're hoping they add 10 to 15 more points to application. So, December.
Great, thanks.
Ms. Lundberg?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
I just got a couple of things from our work session from last week. I would like to add the Housing Commission to come back for a work session in December to give us an update on where they're at. I would also like a copy of their financials. And I don't think that it's necessary for the city staff to come and have them, help them figure out how to start the recordings for their Housing Commission meeting. I mean, there's five commissioners and he has a secretary, so, I mean, they can figure it out.
So we did do a training today and I think, I believe Lindsay knows how to do it, so they, they should be, should be good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, okay. I want to thank the city council members for reappointing the three incumbents to the, to the Planning Commission. I don't think anybody really understands that those three people have, two of them have their master planning certifications. They've taken lots of training through the, through the city, being able to provide some training and send them to different, you know, seminars and things. As far as Robert Slovinski goes, he's my husband, I will tell you that he doesn't talk about himself much, but he has a bachelor's degree in business administration as well as a bachelor's degree in survey engineering. He has been working on surveying on and off all of his life since he was 17 for his cousin who owned his own surveying company. He knows just about every inch of the city. What I really love about the Planning Commission is the fact that they're pretty, they have diverse and thoughtful comments. They get along very well during their meetings. If you have a chance to attend them, you'll see that. I think they have a 360-degree approach to things and they come together at the end. They've been involved in some very big projects over the year. So the Hampton Inn was quite, quite intense with, with stretching from 7:00 in the evening till after midnight with some of these meetings. They ran into the same situation with approving marijuana locations that stretched long into the evening. So they, they're volunteers. We have to, we have to recognize that anybody that serves on a commission is a volunteer. They don't get paid for it. So I think all of our commissions work pretty well, but I'm especially proud of all the challenges that have been thrown at the Planning Commission. So I appreciate their work on it. And that's all I have to say. So.
Motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we have a closed session. Mayor?
Oh, we have to go to a special meeting. It's a closed session. So are we going in the back room or are we clearing the council chambers?
We can sit here, I think.
Okay.
But we have to, you have, we have.
Motion to go. Motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go to.
No, we have, there's, we have to do a motion in a second and do a roll call vote.
Okay.
There's a.
Motion.
I'll second it.
We haven't read it yet. We have to read what the closed session is for.
Consideration of a closed session. Union contract negotiation. City manager William Gamble has requested a closed session this evening as permitted by an Open Meetings Act, Section 8C, to discuss contract negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters. At this time, council could take action to proceed to close session under Section 8C for the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.